Okay, it is five oh six. We're gonna call this me- meeting the work session to order Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty five. With that, we will do the pledges. There will be no invocation, but we'll do the pledges to the American flag and then the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, with that, it is five oh seven and as authorized by section five five one oh seven one of the Texas government code, this meeting may be convened into close executive session in order to seek confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any, in the item herein. So with that, it is five oh seven and we will be in executive session. And our city attorney will be on the phone.
Okay, it is five twenty-one and as Santa would say, let's slay this meeting to you Jeff.
All right gentlemen, based on the last meeting that we had, the majority of the changes were really discussed, kind of brought up in that meeting. So I just wanted to kind of highlight them. First one was the law enforcement has been removed. Per the discussion we had last time, that's come out. The things that have gone in to replace or to fill those funds. A handful of things. One is a public works manager, which we had discussed along with motor tools, tractor, trailer, the things that go along with that role to be able to do the things that we would like to start that role off doing. We did add a two and a half percent COLA plus merit increase for all eligible employees. There will be a couple that that doesn't necessarily affect. But basically that's the majority of staff, both in city hall as well as across the street at the fire department. Did increase the road repair budget to, I believe it's two hundred and sixty thousand now. So that is significantly more than we had this year. We also added a couple of body cams for the fire marshal and code compliance to protect themselves. And some of the issues that they could potentially go into so that we have that video protection for them. And then the other thing that came up since the last meeting and I will let Eddie cover this if you guys have any questions, but he had asked for a fire department admin role to help with some of the admin tasks that they have. As we are not planning on filling that fire marshal position right away, that will kind of help offset some of that stuff. It will be full transparency, a great benefit to me because all of their financial stuff will go through that one person. So it'll make it much easier on me, giving me one point of contact, looking for receipts and invoices and things like that. So he can discuss more if you'd like. What kind of he envisions for that role, but that did kind of fill some of the offset money as well.
Jeff, I don't think we discussed this in our last meeting, that we also were putting in that annual contract for SPI. For all road engineering. Did we actually talk about it being in there? Okay.
Yeah, that was in there last time. So this is just, I just covered the things that I changed since last time, just as opposed to going through the whole thing again. So if y'all, if y'all see anything. So this budget book that's in front of you, I completed today. So this one, I sent it over to our website person to add it to our website. So if it's not up, by the time we got in this meeting, it should likely be up there tomorrow. For the public to see, but this is literally where we stand as of this afternoon.
And if I can, I would like to take a moment, if we can, on page one, real quick. I just want to make sure we get some actual factual clarification here on the franchise fees. You have here Jeff, three hundred and one thousand on the franchise fees? Okay, so let's clear the franchise fees misinformation that's going on out there. If you go back and you look at the franchise fee agreements that were issued, I believe, was it twenty-three? Is that correct? For the water? Okay. So if you go back and look at that, the unfortunate thing that took place when that was passed as an ordinance. It was then sent out by the, at that point, the city administrator for red lines. When you approve something, that's an ordinance, Eddie, that's a law, correct? You don't usually send law out to be redlined. So once you did that and you allowed them to redline it, High Point changed their date. RCH changed a few things. Blackland didn't need to respond because we don't have homes in Blackland. Where there's no homes in city limits that would be supplied by Blackland. So once you did that and you allowed them to change it, you'd have to bring that back for a vote. Anyone who had sat on council would know that. So when that happened, that voided out all those changes. Also, when an ordinance is put in place, it's up to the city staff to enforce that ordinance. It was never enforced. The amount of homes that High Point had totaled up to about one thousand seven hundred dollars. Would that be correct, Beth? One thousand seven hundred dollars. Because those are the, you can only use within the right of way. Four hundred of that would have been from the fire department and city hall. The city on the RCH side had, I don't know, about eight hundred plus homes roughly. And that came out to twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Now, I know many people have seen out there a figure of two hundred thousand. That is way overinflated. It would take us about ten years to get to that figure. So it was twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. So let's use factual numbers when we are using these things. We know exactly what we're talking about. It was never that amount.
And to just go into a little more explanation as to why it was only eight hundred homes on RCH. We legally could only charge where we own roads. So there were a lot of subdivisions that would not get charged the franchise fee because we did not own the roads. So basically it was Sonoma Verde, Guelph Creek, and maybe Pollen Road. League Road, League Road, Pollen Road, and some of class. Everything else is in other water districts or private routes.
The only reason I want to point that out is because that is why it's not reflected here. So when that was rescinded by the council on July the ninth, or I'm sorry, May ninth, that was the right thing to do because it had never been enforced. And I believe we all said at that time that we would revisit franchise fees once we got everything set in order. And when that day comes, we will sit down and we will discuss franchise fees for water providers. But until then, here we are.
Question. So as the ordinance we passed on the roads recently, if we take over those roads, that, that means we're responding, we can do a franchise fee on those roads. Is that true?
If you reinstate the ordinance, the ordinance has been repealed. So yes, so for example, Glen Aker has brought in their petition for their roads. So you would have those thirty-five roughly homeowners that are on RCH water. So yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, go ahead Jeff.
That's really all I had. Just wanted to bring up the changes since the last meeting. If there's any questions at all, now's the time.
So let's talk about the reserve funds. How does this play in this budget?
So this is a zero-based budget, meaning we voted the exact amount that we are estimating for revenue. So we've got roughly five million dollars in reserves right now. Our reserve fund policy states that we are to have forty to sixty percent of our annual budget in reserves. So if it drops under forty, staff is supposed to come up with a plan to get it back above forty as quickly as possible. We are at about five million. That's more than a hundred percent of our budget. Yeah, so our budget for next year, well, take that back. Our budget for next year is five point one three, or five point one one three. So we're basically right at a hundred percent budget on our reserves. So we could roughly do, or we should, based on that policy, at least two million dollars, we should encumber, appropriate, however you want to. Correct. That, because all of that, none of that came out of the general fund. That all came out of the utility fund. And I did get the final bill today from EnviroServe. Our estimate is accurate. So it's going to be about one point two five million from them.
So I know Conrad before talked about using excess reserves fifty percent towards like a public safety capital fund and then another fifty percent to go to the roads capital fund.
So this, this does not have to be part of the budget necessarily, although it gets brought up every year at budget time because that's when we're looking at these, these big numbers. But yeah, one of the things that he had mentioned was taking, say, twenty percent of the recurrent reserves and putting it towards roads, twenty percent towards public safety. There are mentions in that policy of keeping utility fund at a certain level, which this budget will get us to that minimum level. Even after the force main issue. There are, there are talks in there about having funds available for public safety vehicles to be able to replace them for cash instead of having to finance. Since we just repurchased Anfleet, which we have technically a code compliance vehicle and a pull truck right now. Since we just replaced three out of four of those vehicles, or I guess two out of four technically, we pushed one down a level. We don't have anything in that reserve right now because we used it all on this year's budget. But that is something that is in that policy as well to consider, so.
And those funds have to remain liquid? These are liquid funds available for use now?
No, our reserve funds do not have to be liquid. They can be invested.
And that's, is that where the three-year comes in?
What do you mean the three-year?
We have a three-year limit on how far we can invest out.
Well, the, because reserves have to be somewhat liquid, obviously in case of an emergency like the force main. So they can't be a hundred percent tied up. So that's why we use different funds. I think, if I remember right, they reinvest basically every year anyway. So everything's on kind of a one-year turn so that we always have access to something if we need it.
Beyond the sixty percent, I think we're talking about two million here. If we pull that off the table and invest that, does that come out of the reserve fund?
It's already being invested.
If we put that into a three-year note?
It, it's already in our investment funds. It's not sitting in a checking account. This is money that's actually being invested currently in whether it's Textpool or Logic, one of our investment accounts. So we can invest that money however our policy allows, whether it's through one of those entities or any others that are allowed either through our policy or by the state.
So I heard a couple of things that, so the two million that were over, it, I heard that staff needs to put together a plan?
No, if we fall under the forty percent reserve, that's when the policy says staff should present a plan. If we're over, it's up to you guys how you want to spend that money. And that two million is really the minimum to get us to the upper end of that reserve that our policy says we should have. It could be up to three million and still be within that forty to sixty percent range. But that's a council decision.
I mean, the other option too is to, besides roads and public safety is what I talked about last year and I brought up initially this year was we still owe a million bucks on this building. We could pay that off. Do we know what that, that interest rate is? It climbs.
It maxes out at four percent.
Yeah, it maxes out.
At its highest. So, and we're almost to that four percent. We're in the high threes right now. Four percent is the highest.
Ten years left.
There's ten years left on it. We're just over the halfway period.
Which would be about a quarter of a million dollars in interest.
But our investments are making more than we're paying in interest on the building.
Feel pretty comfortable we can get better than that? Well, I just think that we should, should do something with the excess reserves, whether it's to beef up for roads in anticipation of some people submitting items. And then also just having a new fire engine fund or something. For these guys.
If we, if we took the, we'll just say two and a half million, since it's between two and three. If we took the two and a half million to get down to about fifty-five, sixty percent in our capital fund, we would probably not be able to repair the roads we currently own today.
And obviously I know it hasn't began yet, but Bev and Mayor Pro Tim will be looking to negotiate the sale of pipes, not the mayor, the mayor pro Tim. Just make sure we get that cleared up out there in the world. And then that could be money that's, could be allocated and where would that be able to be allocated? I know we spoke on it earlier. I just want that to be.
Yeah, I definitely want to check with our attorney to make sure that we're not violating any rules there. But I would imagine that because the city owns the pipes, that money could go to whatever you guys wanted to, to put it towards, whether that's roads, public safety, or whatever else.
And the reason I asked for, to clarify that is because, you know, when you, Sonoma Verde, if we, if the pipes do get sold, some may say that the funds, since it was a pit, would be, oh, then that money automatically goes back into the restructure of the pit or the residence of Sonoma Verde. But that's not necessarily true because the city owns the pipes. The agreement of you as a resident, meet that included. You entered in that agreement in the pit knowing what you were doing and that that was paying for the infrastructure, but the city owns the pipes. So if the city does enter into an agreement to sell those pipes, whatever that figure is, then that would go into the budget as well for Jeff to distribute out how we see fit or how we want to amend the budget or whatnot. I know I spoke with Jeff on this as well as Chief Stow that, you know, that could open up the possibility of, you know, advancing on a sheriff deputy. The downside of that is the county will probably make you wait until October of twenty-six. They're not going to probably go in and amend it midterm, I would think, if that would happen. I don't know. Or I know some people had talked about ambulance services. There's other things that we could look at doing if those pipes get sold, including adding to the roads budget. Did I say all that correctly, Jeff? I know we spoke on that only briefly today.
Yes, sir.
Can I talk about two things and I'll get these out of my way? First thing is I know we added the COLA. I know last time we talked about steps. Are those still included in there?
Yes, those have both been added. That amounted to about seventy grand for here and across the street altogether.
Okay, so the step, those are only given to this, to the changing, right, correct? Just the people that actually stepped up into new roles or is it a blanket?
No, that's like your, it's a, it's essentially a three percent merit increase is what it is.
So it has nothing to do with changing roles?
No.
It's strictly, it's strictly a raise after your review. If you've done a good job, you'll be granted a three percent step raise.
So the two and a half percent COLA guaranteed for everybody, the three percent.
But everybody that's been here and gone through a review, right?
Correct.
Nobody, none of the new guys?
Correct, well.
Maybe?
That's up for discussion, I guess, if you want to.
Well, I mean, if it's a, I just, I, like, like I said, I'm all for like, you know, I'm a big proponent of the COLA, but at the same time, I want to make sure that what we're paying for is earned and that's in, it sounds like from what I understand, the step isn't a step in a new role, it's a merit.
It's a merit.
So that's the same.
The COLA moves the whole range. The COLA moves the whole range up by two and a half percent. The, so that's across the board. The, the step or a merit, as we would call it in, outside of the public, is, is going to be.
For see, for guys. Right, for see, for guys that have been here and gone through the process.
Fire Department has a seven step point.
Microphone.
When you get hired on, you see your first year and then you could, your money, which would, which your money would look like in seven years if you stayed in that position? Your top out. So, and that's, again, those are based on merit.
But you do a step till after year one, right?
Correct. So he does have some new employees that. Correct, so he does have some new employees that would not necessarily be getting a step this year because they haven't been here now, what, a month?
Yeah, okay.
Two months maybe, so, um, once they hit their year probation is when that next step would be able to kick in for them. That's kind of a, congratulations, you passed probation. Here's your next step.
What I do for budget purposes is put it across the board. That way, if they earn it.
But it's given, okay, got it, okay. My second thing, my second thing is I was serious about the ordinance that we passed. I, I, I don't want that to be, uh, you know, just to be said and then put in the back burner. So I would actually like to see somewhere in here that we put some money aside. I think for two reasons. Number one, to, you know, because if, if we truly care about helping these people, let's help them, right? So if we can, let's do. I think that's a, that's a priority for me. I'll, I'll stand behind that. But also because I think the way that we figured this out, it's a way that, that actually the city can help, right? With this, you know, with, with these people and, and, I mean, it's, it sounds like it's, it's, it's not a whole lot out of our, you know, for the numbers we were talking about helping grant. It's not a whole lot to the city to help the situation, right?
Eric, if I'm, if I may, can you give just a very small brief? I know it's not concrete, but just a small brief on what you and I spoke about with how this worked so that the, the people out there that are worried that the city is doing, you know, just 100% bailouts is false.
I wanted to talk to Hall about it, just in how we word it. But the, the end deal is, how many, how many of you guys, how many people have mortgages? I'm, I'm assuming everybody's had a mortgage, right? Well, at the end of the mortgage, you look at how much you pay in interest and it's almost as much as you borrowed most mortgages. And that's kind of what's going on here. We're doing a 20-year ner, 20-year note with these folks. Depending on the interest rate, at the end of this note, they're actually going to end up paying back what, what the city has shelled out. Depending on how we structure it, each deal needs to be structured correctly. But depending on interest rate and time, they actually end up paying back the city completely. So if 300,000 goes out from the city, 300,000 will come back over 20 years. Because we're not in this, we cannot make a profit from this interest. This interest goes back to the city, which is kind of what I'm seeing. I'm, I'm concerned about future city cash flows and this might help that problem.
Yeah, so, okay.
Jerry, correct me. We discussed the 20 years and said not everyone would be given 20 years. It would be based on the amount that was needed for the project?
Yeah, every, every deal or every petition will be different because some may need more assistance than others. So we probably wouldn't do a 20-year note for $10,000, for $50,000, $300,000 maybe more. But, yeah, it's, it varies from each.
So, so that's, so, so that's why I think that we should talk about that and talk about starting that fund now. Just for, um, to also kind of clarify some of the numbers that have been given out. I mean, from what I understand, at the 80/20 on what we anticipated the cost of the repair, what would that cost the city upfront?
On 80/20?
Yeah, on 80/20, what would, what would our part be to help Glen Acres get the road that they, that they?
Well, the city's going to pay for everything upfront. It's just how much does the city get paid back?
After the, let's say, end of the day, if there was no interest, what was our, what would, would have our side have been?
20% on an 80/20?
What was that total for the road repair? Do you remember?
Which road are we talking about?
If it, if it's Glen Acres and it's just a straight road repair, this is another bad misinformation that's out there.
Right.
Not 3 million.
Zeros are getting added. It's just 300.
Zeros added everywhere. It's 300. It'd be, my guess is 300,000. The only reason I say that is because the actual quote was $212,000. What they did not quote in the estimate that was turned in by them was the, uh, what's it? Culvert, okay? The culvert, nobody knows. It is estimated, or I would say guesstimated to be more accurate term, between 60 and 80. So what I said was, oh, 300,000. It would probably be, could be 260, could be 280.
Right, so, so for easy math at 300, our side would be 60 grand, which would get in the road. And absolutely in interest, we would, we would get that back. So in essence, at the end of this, the, the city would, this is, this is an issue of helping people and not, not, you know, hurting the city.
So, so the breakage isn't 70/30?
Right.
Depending on the interest rate and time.
I don't see why we can't, we shouldn't.
Okay, wait, somebody needs to help me with basic math. If it's $300,000 and it's a 50/50 deal.
Not a, oh, was it 50? Did we change 50/50?
It's 50/50.
I thought, I thought.
Okay, it's not an 80/20.
Negotiate. Got it, okay.
And this, this is?
This is the thing with this ordinance that many are just not reading. At the end of the day, it's negotiated by the council. If the council says 50/50, then it's 50/50, right? If the council comes back and says 80/20, then it's 80/20. So all the figures that are being thrown out there are imaginary figures because they're just not real yet. You can't, you can't say what hasn't happened yet. You, you're making make believe. You're, 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 it's like, it's like, there's no effective contract. So you can't actually effectively quote any number because there's not a number that exists yet. There's been zero, the ordinance has passed, but there's been zero approved on anything. So it's all imaginary like Santa.
Each proposal needs to be evaluated. And I would highly recommend as, as council members that we evaluate it, looking at the total output from the city over, whether it's 10-year note, 20-year note, how much we're getting back in interest.
But just remember, whatever you approve, you're responsible for 100% upfront.
Correct.
And then you are going to get it back over the period, but the city has to have the cash flow to pay it 100% upfront.
Like $2 million in reserves?
Right, so that's why I would like to start that cash flow as part of the.
So, you know, a lot of people will say, we have a ton of money right now. We have $2 million. We're, we're over on reserves. The big issue is in the next three to four years, we're going to have more costs than we're going to have income. We're going to need, we're going to need law enforcement. I think the, I think the fire department's pretty good, but they're also going to need things. We're, we're all going to, there's going to need to be an expansion in City Hall. There's, we're out of space here. There's more costs coming and more recurring costs, and I don't see more recurring revenues coming on board. And I don't like what's coming out of Austin. So I, I won't go off on that tangent, but this allows us to take, you know, savings account and turn it into future income in a sense.
But, and it's my job for the but, I have a real hard problem if you spend the $2 million on private roads that are becoming public when our city-owned streets are in horrendous condition right now.
100% agree. I, I would love to know more about what, I, I know we're behind on things. There's a bunch of things the city is behind on fixing. I would, I would love to get some of those numbers on, on where it is and what we need to do with roads. I, I don't know what the buildings here need. We talked about a water meter last time. So there's a lot of things the city's behind on. I would love to get some numbers on what we need to do to get caught up because we do have some funds here.
Don, I have, in, in line with that, I have a agenda item on the next, at the next council meeting that'll go along that, those lines of doing some fact finding to see where we are, at least in the roads, both public and private, and see what we're up against. And then we can, we can develop a plan. The idea would be after we get that information to develop a plan for us to move forward and start taking care of these things. Okay? So hopefully you'll be pleased with that.
The reserve stuff does not need to be solved today, right?
No, that is not, does not have to be done as part of the budget. It just gets brought up during the budget process every year. So and as a, as a reminder, from our last meeting, we do have a road CIP in this budget. So that was budgeted for next year to evaluate all the roads and start working on that. We could, I don't remember that off the top of my, I don't think I did. Jeff, we did talk about that.
And, and with, with that concern on the reserves, we can always come back to the table from the dais, make those amendments or those suggestions from the dais open to the public so that.
I think the elephant in the room is going to be, there's $2 million in reserves. What are we doing raising tax rates? Or, or going to the voter approval rate? Well, why are we doing that if we have $2 million and?
Well, it's because we were, we were not a, we, I mean, if in, in complete transparency is you, you weren't an effective government. You can't, you can't walk around boasting that you have this robust reserve when you were not, you're not using the money like you're supposed to. That's not, that's not a bragging right. That's, I would be, that's bad.
I know that people are going to ask that question. I just want to get in front of it.
Yeah, so, so all that is, is we, we make sure that that reserve that we're talking about, because the ordinance, Bev, if I'm correct, it's what, 60% or 40% is what it says for our reserve?
40 to 60.
40 to 60. So we're actually out of ordinance. We're not even in compliance with our own ordinance. Our ordinance says we're supposed to be at 40 to 60, not 100. So yes, I agree. That's, it's to Eric's point to maybe possibly allocate some of that money. Again, it doesn't have to be solved tonight, but it does need to be started. It, it does need to start being earmarked so that Jeff understands, and maybe earmark's not the right term, but it just needs to be starting to be talked about. So that way, when you do a voter approval rate, uh, we can start explaining, you know, the right things.
And the thing with this is if we allocate, say, a million dollars to roads and we have another emergency and we need that million dollars because you allocated it or earmarked it, you can change that back. So if it comes to a point where we have another emergency and we need part of that money, all of that money, it is possible, not necessarily the best decision, depending on what's going on, but it is possible to pull that money back into the general fund to use for, for emergencies. Because you earmarked it, it wasn't a grant or something of that nature.
I, I think the point I just wanted to make is somebody's going to see a reserve fund or $2 million and over. I can see a headline, $2 million of reserves. Why are we raising taxes? It's very clear that we need to raise the tax rate. We're so low. And with the amount that we can raise it every year, we will, I'm not going to say never catch up, but it's very far-fetched so we will catch up to a point of a well-operating city anytime soon in most, most of our lifetimes in this room. So there's that. We, we need to raise the tax rate. We're so far behind on that. The $2 million, while it may or may not be needed right now, I can guarantee it will be needed in the next four years. We're behind on some things and we need, we have more expenses coming. So I just kind of want to get out in front of that.
And actually brings up something that I meant to tell you guys tonight. I got, um, last week while I was out, I got, we'll call it tentative final figures from CAD on tax rate. So the tentative final number that they gave us for the voter approval rate is a 9.239. So it's only going up about .3 cents. 9.239.
There's that, there's that heavy tax rate we're going to bring on to the people.
And 1.1 of that, 1.1 of that goes towards debt service, which does not count towards our voter approval rate. So to Jerry's point of potentially paying off City Hall, we wouldn't, that 1.1 would just go away the next year. We wouldn't, that wouldn't be added to our 3.5% potential increase, which legislation, part of the special session is to reduce that to 2.5% if y'all haven't heard. It is tentatively bracketed, but as we know, brackets change, so.
We cannot operate, the city that we are going to be, we cannot get to the tax rate to do the basic core services that we need to do with the growth that we have coming. If we did V A R every year, at the current rate, not, and that's what I was saying, don't like what's coming out of Austin. At the current rate, we, at best 35 years to get to a point where we can, you know, operate the, where we need to be. So, uh, it just needs to happen. And, and we are the lowest in Rockwall County by far. By what, multiple of 3? It just needs to, it, this isn't about today. This is about the future. And, and people need to start looking forward, um, in this building. Unfortunately, I, I don't want to look backwards. I don't know what people were thinking prior, but I can just tell you, looking forward, we need to start looking forward and looking at what's coming. And we are not financially prepared.
And just to go on the record, to remind those who are listening, the vote that was taken in May to move that tax burden, this portion of the sales tax that goes to pay down taxes, yes, that vote passed, but the comptroller ruled that our language was not correct. So that, that measure failed. We have to take it back before the voters. So when Jeff talked about the debt service that will go against taxes as part of our sales tax, we didn't get that money.
When's the, when's that could be back on? Was that November?
We have to wait a year. So November is the first.
May, May of '26, right?
Yeah, so May of '26 is the first time. And basically, they just wanted, they wouldn't even give me the verbiage that they wanted to use, but they wanted it to be more clear than what we had. And the big, the best I could gather from them, and I've, I have looped Mr. Hall in on this to help us clarify this for next time around, but the best I could gather was they didn't like that we had public safety or streets. That they wanted it to be one or the other. That was the best I could gather from the very cryptic email that I received.
The one good thing from you and I attending the TML Legislative Workshop update was, if I recall, they were passed, they passed something there, now we can send something to have that reviewed for correctness now? Is that right?
Yes, I do believe they passed something so that ballot language can be reviewed.
Within seven days so that when, once we submit it, we get it back within seven days to make sure it's good.
And then if they agree to it, it's, they won't come back and challenge it after the fact. So we should, that should be in effect by the time we actually put this back on the ballot. So, but we are trying to get ahead of it so that we understand it to do it right and not have to have it go back and forth anyways. Any other questions?
What was, uh, what was the consensus of the conclusion on Councilman Towery's ask to have a certain amount of money earmarked for servicing that ordinance that was passed recently? If that's, you understand what I mean?
Yeah, in my mind, that's something that would be, um, an ordinance or direction from the dais because that's not technically part of the budget. Because we have to do a zero-based budget, so moving funds from reserves to something else.
So then, so then basically, um, Councilman Towery or someone else would need to make a motion to, on, on the agenda to do that.
That's my, that's my opinion on it.
I would just ask, let's wait till after the survey and see where our standing is. And I think since we can do this at any time, I think after the survey, we'll kind of see what we're really sitting with and how we can allocate some.
Yeah, my, just so everybody's aware, you're going to see on the agenda coming up, uh, next council meeting. But I, I sat down with, um, city manager and, uh, asked about can we get the roads in the city surveyed, um, both public and private to ascertain how many miles, how many miles of roads we have, what condition they're in, and what it's going to need to bring them back to standard. And of course, we'll have to identify what standard is, right? So that would be my, my goal is to, to pay a professional company to do that for us. And then we would have facts to deal with. And then we would have, if it was up to me, we would have a workshop like we're having right now and brainstorm how we're going to tackle all these things.
I thought we already have that in the budget. We're already doing that.
The, the one we have in the budget is not clear on whether it includes private roads. So that, I think that's the one thing that.
I think Bev was just saying that that was for city roads only, so this would be all roads.
The actual agenda item is just to identify three companies that can do it for us, not to move forward with it until action by council.
Correct. Because obviously if it was cost prohibitive, didn't make sense. We wouldn't want to move forward. We, we'd look for other options. So, thank you.
I have four different questions. Four. You want me to shoot them all at you or one at a time?
Let's, let's go one at a time. Memory's always so good. First thing back from vacation, I'm still going to catch up.
Two, me too, me too. Two of these are, are kind of related and they may be in there. I've, I've heard they're in here. I'm just not seeing them. Something that was really important to me when I came on was managing growth. And I think a big part of that is empowering P and Z. And I've spoke with Mark at P and Z a little bit on this. And, um, they really need some help with ordinances in the comp plan. Is there any budget in here for comp plan review and/or ordinance review?
Yes, the comp plan review is under the contract city planner category.
And is it, is it sufficient?
Yes, it is based on the estimate that our contract city planner. Yes, it is based on the estimate that our contract city planner told us that he would estimate that his cost would be to kinda head that up. And that would be obviously our, it would be him along with some sort of committee.
Let me ask a question on, uh, Peyton, with the, uh, concern that Don has, is that something that you and Martin can work with the, uh, P&amp;Z on, the ordinances?
Okay, I'm gonna make this as nice as possible. I have heard for the last six months that our ordinances are extremely out of date and they need work, but no one is willing to point out which ones.
I'm, I'm working on it. So, we had a discussion today, uh, I mean, I'm obviously not a blanket, but, um, I would absolutely be willing to sit down with anybody, uh, and work on this because I agree there are some, I'm obviously looking more at the commercial side of things, um, and making sure that we have some, um, you know, signage and other things in place before this commercial goes in. But, um, I mean, I'm all about going through ordinances and, and taking a look at that.
Peyton, have you been looking at some of the ordinances already? And I, I know that in some of the conversations we've had, you've already been kinda diving in and looking at some. Can you give a little update on what you think you see?
Yeah, so as it pertains to just the ordinances that McLennan Chisholm has right now, I've noticed from my time here that it's probably, if I had to put it in percentage, it'd probably be like seventy, thirty as far as reactionary work or retroactive error or reviews. So, yes, there are countless line items that could be amended or added into the ordinances. Um, would it help my job as it pertains to, uh, commercial development or all things development? Yeah, um, like the plat amendment email that I sent on Thursday last week, that's reactionary, you know? That took up half the day. Um, so Mr. Towery and I are talking about two different ordinances right now. And there are several others to where, I mean, we could spend hours going through the zoning ordinance to get it up to par, but it's not there yet, I will say that.
So, I, I just wanna make sure, I'm, I'm just a financier, I don't know anything about planning. I'm not gonna claim to, as far as city planning. I wanna make sure that you and P&amp;Z have all the resources you guys need when we're, when we're looking at budget. That's, that's, that's more of the question, just, you guys are gonna kinda be the, the forefront of, of developing this town and city moving forward. Do you have all the resources you need?
Yes and no. I mean, again, it goes back to reactionary and, you know, just taking things as they come, right? So I'm still running the city, right? Um, there are things that I would, once, you know, I've already gotten very settled in, in my two and a half months here. Um, so not everything is reactionary nowadays. At first, it was. Um, so it's a yes and no. Um, it's case by case. Um, you know, I think for the larger scale developments, that's where you really want that well-equipped ordinance, right? Um, and that goes back to the checklist suggestions that I recommended last week. Um, but they're case by case, the answer is yes and no. And, you know, I can't get, it would take hours for me to explain it comprehensively. So, I guess the answer is, uh, no, there are not. It, it's not a satisfactory allocation from my point of view, but we all have our own silos, if you will, so.
But we, we have it in the budget to look at these things this year and.
We have fifty thousand dollars in the city planner, um, professional services, which would be the, that consultant. So, do you remember how much the, um, comp review was? Like, off the top of my head, I don't remember how much it was.
One A five or thirty, because his actual, he didn't feel that Peyton was gonna need him that much, so he put less in his, um, hourly deed.
So, that's, I was thinking twenty-seven was the number that I had remembered from when we talked about that. So that leaves us another twenty-three thousand. And as Peyton mentioned earlier, he's not had to reach out to him for anything at this point. So that leaves us with a good twenty grand.
That's for ordinance review.
If that's what it needs to be, the twenty-seven is the comp plan revision.
Okay, what about ordinance?
It is, it is not tied directly to ordinance review, it's just from the planning professional for the year.
For comp plan?
No.
For E, for whatever?
For whatever.
Whatever you need. Twenty, twenty-seven is for the comp plan. The other twenty-three is for if Peyton gets a difficult developer in here that he needs help with, or a difficult project that he needs to go to a more ten-year professional. Now, if you wanna use that for ordinance review, you can. Just know that Peyton needs a little bit of a cushion if he needs additional help.
And to his point, he, he's hardly used it, or hasn't used any at this point. So, we're not anticipating him needing that much, but again, wanting to over-budget on our expenses and make sure that we have enough, which I know is what you're getting at here.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure we have enough to do these things, our city's growing quickly. And I'll tell you, I think sometimes some developers have more resources than we do and they can kinda come in and tell us what we need to do. And that's not a good position for us to protect our city. And I, I wanna point out to Mr. Towery, uh, P&amp;Z is volunteer, you're volunteer.
Yeah.
Um, we're not lawyers, we, we don't do ordinance review. I would be out of my lane doing that. And we also do not have unlimited time, and neither does P&amp;Z. That, that's, that's my only thought on, on that is, these are, these aren't legal professionals. And, and they're volunteers, I don't know how much time they want, you know, give to the city.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, I get, so you kinda, to, cause that was gonna be my question, um, I, I mean, I'm, again, I don't know exactly, you know, who does what to a T yet, I'm, I'm still learning. But my question was gonna be, does P&amp;Z not, would they not go through the ordinances and bring up the ones they have issues with? And then at that point, we would go to legal writing and create, I mean, it sounds, is that not what they're?
Let me let Bev comment on that.
I don't know.
Yeah, let me let Bev comment on some of that, she might be able to clear it up. And then let me, after Bev finishes, I'll, I'll throw something out there.
Okay, in my forty-five years here, yes, P&amp;Z would come forward with what ordinance they felt needed review, needed updated, needed changed. They basically, it was their job to go through and point that out to us. That was why my comment earlier. So, if they've had issue with one from a developer that has come to them or an individual that came to them wanting to replat their property or whatever it is, they should point out to us that it needs looked at. Then, the paid people can go and do that. But, the paid people's plates are pretty full to basically go through a code book this thick on a daily basis and see what needs updated.
My, my only concern with that is, it would be kinda what Peyton was talking about, it sounds like it would be a little more reactionary, um, like it, they would only be brought up when there is an incident. I, I do like the idea of what Don and Peyton were saying of getting ahead and reviewing and see, because that's, that's kind of one of my concerns that I'm going through. And I'm seeing some things that are going to be issues coming up that I would like to already have ordinances in place. So, I, again, I, I don't know the whole, you know, uh, what all P&amp;Z, you know, if they do, I, I, I agree. I don't know if they have time to go through all the ordinances. So, if that's a paid thing that we have somebody come in and sit, but it still sounds like we need to be a part of that. It doesn't sound like we want a third party making those decisions. It would take time from other people, I'm, I'm guessing.
But Eric, what I appreciate about what you just said is you know there are ordinances that need updated, so you have looked at them. If other people that are making a blanket statement that our ordinances are out of date and need work can't point me in the right direction?
Let, uh, Eddie speak and then let me, I, I've got something I wanna say on that, Eddie.
All right, so, just so we know how we got here, so we can avoid this in the future. Whenever I took the fire marshal's position, I provided a binder to Bev's point of, these are codes and ordinances that need to be changed because they, they cancel each other out, right? The way we got here, on multiple different levels, the way I explain it is, you had a lot of people that were preaching before they read the Bible. You had council members that were submitting ordinances to be approved, but they didn't know what our current ordinances were. And they didn't realize by approving this from the dais, you may have just negated four other ordinances. Prime example, we had an individual that submitted, uh, an ordinance for food trucks. The ordinance for food trucks, depending on which one you want, where your stance is, what permit you're applying for, food trucks negated street vendor ordinance. Food truck negated, uh, alcoholic beverage sales. Food trucks, and there's six different ordinances that just that food truck ordinance either conflicted with or completely negated one another. So, to avoid this in the future, if you're submitting an ordinance, please know the ordinances.
So, so real quick, because I definitely respect what you're saying, Eric and Don, and for sure Peyton. Obviously, the biggest concern with the ordinances right now is because of the commercial corridor. And I will be very stressful to, or stress this very greatly to this council and even myself as a voting member now. We are the foundation that is going to form the commercial corridor. So, this is how we will be remembered. So we want to make sure that we protect the look and feeling vibe, if you will, of McLennan Chisholm. You know, at the end of the day, whatever we approve for that commercial corridor is what we agreed to shape the city in that area. And I don't want us to look back and go, I wish we would've done it different. I want us to look back and go, I'm, I'm glad we did it that way, right? So, it is paramount that these ordinances be locked on. To Don's point, they are volunteer, most, almost all of us are all volunteer positions minus the staff. So, Jeff, if you said fifty thousand was allocated to the, um, to Martin, could we ask Martin what it would, would be a start to look at our ordinances? So let's say we have somebody, uh, that's already allocated X amount of dollars and say, you know, if he comes back and says, well, it'll run me about fifteen grand to, uh, look at all these ordinances and get them up to par or whatever it takes. Now we're using a paid member, so we don't have to worry so much about hitting the volunteers. Because the sooner we put that foundation in place, the better we will have an understanding when we're about to be making decisions on the dais for a lot of the commercial stuff that's coming our way. Because we do not wanna look back and go, man, I wish we would've done it differently. And I, and I, I can assure you, I'm very, I guess, um, adaptive to what's going on right now with the commercial corridor. I'm, I'm really watching it because, to Don's point, that is also gonna be our huge point of our sales tax revenue. So we wanna make sure we do it right.
So I think we could definitely, to your point, we could definitely have that conversation. The hard part is without knowing what ordinances are out, and he's not gonna know that to give us, without going through them, it's gonna be really, yeah, we really need input from people that are looking at these on a regular basis on some sort of starting point, in my opinion, and I'm not an ordinance person.
Can we put together some kind of like review committee that maybe a couple of us work with P&amp;Z and we can just kind of get an, an idea of the core ones, like Peyton, we can sit down?
So, Bev is gonna be, is it gonna be at the next meeting? So Bev has something that's coming at the next meeting, um, that we're gonna be assigning some council members to look over some committees. Um, and there is gonna be a P&amp;Z liaison, so maybe whoever that person is, uh, you'll find out August twelfth, yay. Um, once you find out who that is, then that person can be the, the one who gets that started maybe. And then I would say they would wanna direct line to, uh, Peyton and then Bev, uh, while she's still on intero, they would wanna work with those two to get it going.
And if you want, I'm happy to call Martin and see what he would give us as a quote. But if we just blanketly say, look at our ordinances, and it's gonna be a lot. But if we just maybe say, look at our commercial, our commercial, if that's where we really think the most of the work needs to be done?
I mean, to put it simply, in my opinion, to go straight to Mr. Martin, while he obviously is more experienced than me, to go straight to that by the spending of monies, in my opinion, would not be the best first step. Because there are things that I've noticed on a planner one, maybe not a planner one level, but a planner two level, a planner three level, and then senior planner Frisco, and then now here. I mean, there's, we could go over light ordinances, sign ordinances, every single application type we have from preliminary plat, final plat, site plan requirements, um, architectural details that I'm only pulling right now from the comp plan. Um, there's tons of things that, at my current level of experience, we could get the ball rolling, um, with. And then obviously have some sort of final proof through Halla or Mr. Martin. But I think to go straight to, uh, Mr. Martin might not be the best first step. Um, that's just my opinion.
Nope, I respect that, I mean, that's, that's why you're here, sir, so.
We cannot direct during this meeting, right? We have to do that from council meetings.
No, no, no direct or vote, I believe, right?
Um, can I, can I pivot to the last two questions? Um, and, and this might be a direction thing, so I don't, no might be a fine answer, but what, whatever happened with the water meter thing? We talked about that last meeting, we're paying a lot in water because we have a wrong meter or a meter that may not fit what we need.
Per High Point Water, who is our provider, our fire suppression system and this building all go into one meter, causing us to have to have the commercial meter. The only, and Eddie, help me walk through this. The only solution I could come up, I could come up with is to find out how the fire suppression system can come off of the main line and have its own meter. I have no clue can that happen, how it would happen. I'm gonna look at the fire guys.
So basically, the way this is gonna work is, you've got one line that comes to the building, it feeds a fire suppression system and the domestic water system. What we would have to do is outside of the riser room, trench or break the concrete, divide that off into a separate line and run a three-quarter inch line to wherever the main comes in for the domestic water system.
This was installed incorrectly when they did it. Firewater systems are not allowed to be turned off. If you have a cell of the building, just like a residential, okay? I fought them when we were building the fire station. This is the only water service company I've ever dealt with that said they meter firewater. I worked in many other cities and we didn't meter firewater. Um, we were able to get them to understand that I'm not paying for a meter on a building that's not moving any damn water. Um, if it has a fire, you're gonna hit that homeowner or business owner, you know, after they already pay their water bills. So we did get it, they did put a meter there, it's there. It's buried about three feet deep under a manhole cover that you can't get to. Um, they did charge us a whole lot less, uh, install rate, um, but we do not get charged monthly for that meter. It can be done, it should've been done that way in the beginning. Um, but unfortunately, probably didn't have anybody doing the fire marshal work that should've been there to catch that in the beginning and say, no, hold on, this needs to be on the other side of that meter to where it should never be able to shut off. So it can be fixed, they can come out and they can make those changes, like Chief Stiles said.
Would that be a cost to city, or could you go back and say, hey, this was installed incorrectly? Or is that, it worked beyond that?
City, city cost, because they didn't, it's gonna be the city cost, unfortunately.
So, anything that happens after the meter is on the homeowner, the property owner, the city, whatever the case is. For us to be able to develop a true plan on this, we need to see what, what they have installed as a water line, where it goes, I mean, I can't imagine that whenever this building was built, y'all were provided with red, red line drawings that showed where the water lines went. So, with that, we could come up with an estimate on how to resolve the issue. And then y'all just have to make the decision, is, uh, is it just worth the squeeze? If it costs you a hundred thousand dollars to reconfigure the water lines and every year with the additional cost you're spending thirty thousand dollars, I don't know that it's worth it.
So, and, and that might be a special project that probably doesn't need to be in the budget. So it's, I don't know, that was just something that I had from my last, the last meeting notes.
Reserve funds.
Reserve funds, exactly. Get return on lowering the, uh, the water cost, lowering costs is also return. Uh, computers. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around twenty K for computers. Um, I know I'm kinda nitpicking here, but are we doing servers or something? What's, what's that about?
No, it costs us about two thousand dollars per computer that we purchase or replace for the setup, the cost of the actual unit, the setup, everything that my computer guy does for it. Um, we have seven laptops that are up for replacement this year. So that's fourteen thousand of this, of the twenty thousand right there.
Plus any new staff that comes on board that'll have to be given computers?
That's one of the ones that needs to be replaced.
These are two grand?
No, it won't be surfaces anymore because they're not very useful, if you've noticed, if you tried using it.
Yeah, I mean, as councilperson, we just do some word processing, you know? I don't need anything fancy, I just, two grand a computer seems steep, like, I'm putting that out for. Yeah, I mean, as councilperson, we just do some word processing, I don't need anything fancy. I just, two grand a computer seems steep, like, are we putting that out for bid?
So. If you wanted to put out our entire IT service for bid, it's part of our contract with my computer guy. So it would be the entire IC ser, IT service that we would have to do a request for proposal. That I don't know the answer to.
I'm just, I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, like, I know Peyton probably has some really, he probably needs a lot of comp power. But I, I don't know what else is needed in this building. And I'm just two grand a computer squatter, but.
I'm budgeting off of the numbers that we have. And again, I would rather budget high and not need that much than what we did last year where we didn't budget for them at all. We got two new employees and we spent four grand that we weren't, that wasn't budgeted.
So I say we budget for it and if they come back and say two Gs a computer, I say we put them up for, for review and.
Well, I think they already have.
It's in our contract for two grand a computer?
Oh, well, that's what I'm saying. Then how long is the contract? How long have we been with them? We don't know?
Not off the top of my head.
Well, that's.
I, I think at this point, we're probably annual realistically.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're on a five-year contract with them.
Yeah, it's just.
But you have to remember what all my computer guy does for us is way more than just providing the computers.
Yeah, but I, but he charges us for that too, right?
It's in the contract, I'm sure.
I just, I just, I know that a lot of times in cases where you, you're under contract, some companies feel like they can charge you over. I just, I agree with him. When I saw two, 20 grand, I was like, I mean, I don't know, you know, I've built three or four computers in my time, pretty high-end and.
That's every so many, that's whatever, five years, six years.
Yeah, I get it. I mean, it's, it's city money. Yeah, that's different, I guess, but.
No, I'm looking at city money, but I was like, that's.
I know, but I'm saying, you know, I mean, maybe that makes sense to, I just.
Is, I just want to clarify, this isn't, this is just normal desktop PCs. This isn't servers.
No, it's laptops.
All right. Yeah, that's, I was hoping we were getting off cheap. Let's just add zeros everywhere.
You had more questions?
No, I'm done, I'm done.
I don't know. I don't know. It's probably going to be a quick, quick answer for you. I knew Eric was going to say that. We, Jerry talked about, you know, somewhere, years down the road buying an ambulance. I thought last, last time we talked about like an interim step where we kind of worked underneath. Is that, is whatever we need to make that happen in the budget this year? You know, is it? Okay. That's what I needed. Yeah, so that our EMTs can do what they're, they know how to do.
Yes, for ALS engines, there will be minimal impact to the budget. We have enough in our EMS line item to cover any expenses that would come from us going ALS engines.
Okay.
If we start pursuing the amulets, completely different story.
Understood, understood. All right. That's what I wanted to know. Just the one question.
Everybody good?
Um, real quick, on the contracts that we have out there in the budget, did, I know we haven't finalized everything yet. And we're still talking with Bev on some other things and it was spoke on. Do we have room in there or is it budgeted in there for, if we go a contract with Bev Stevens to stay on as a contract consultant?
I would need to know some sort of details about what that would look like to really get it in there. There's not anything specific at this moment.
Okay, and then with that, the TML liability, if, if she does come on as a contract consultant, where, where is that on the, is there any TML liability insurance on that if she's a consultant for the city on anything?
Like what would they cover?
Correct.
I don't think they would cover anything as a consultant.
So she would have to have, if she stayed on as a consultant on anything, she would have to seek insurance in that?
I believe so.
Can we, professional liability insurance would fall on?
Yeah. Which depending on what exactly she's doing, it could be very inexpensive or it could be very expensive. It just depends on the scope of work.
You know, and it's, it's, it's just being talked about, you know, it'd just be for like special consulting projects, nothing major.
I would think for the, what I am imagining, the ENO would be a hundred dollars a year because she's not going to be out physically doing labor that could cause issues and things like that. So I would imagine that it would be very expensive, but I do not believe that our TML insurance would cover it because she is not an employee.
I'll get with Bev and talk a little bit more in detail with her then on if it's something she's wanting to look at. I mean, it's, you know, it's just something being talked about right now even. So I can get with her on that and see which way she wants to go if it's something the city offers out.
I wonder if, if whatever she did as an, as a consultant, that it would have to go to Fabrice and get his sign off on it, I would assume. So I, I'm wondering if you.
I think it would go to the council.
Okay.
For, I think it would go to the council. So at the end of the day, you know, Fabrice and, or whoever the city manager is and, or whoever the city secretary is, they all answer at the end of the day to the mayor and the council. So it's us who make that call. And, and, and just so we're clear, nothing's been offered, nothing's been said. It's just that there's, there was a lot of wealth of knowledge that came in at a time when we needed somebody to step up. And so we, you know, if, if there was ever something that took place again down the road, you know, because we don't know how long people will stay, right? I mean, the last city administrator stayed roughly four years and then put us in this spot. I can't predict how long Fabrice will stay here. And so I'm trying to just think ahead, possibly if it, something comes up again and it's already there, it makes it a little easier for that to transition back if that was ever open. Again, this is so, I'm just asking blanket if it's in the budget, so nothing's been spoke on, nothing's been, there's no craziness going behind the scenes. It's just, I'm just asking questions.
So if you look at our charter and correct me if I'm wrong, those of you that were on the committee and know it better than I do probably, but I believe city manager, city secretary and city attorney are hired by council. The rest of it would go through the city manager barring dollar amounts of potential contracts that would go to a point where they would have to be approved by council.
Yeah, but I would see the city manager would then present the contract for council approval.
So, so people like Dubb, the city engineer, has always been hired by council, but we were general law. So in the future, if we had to get a new city engineer, it would be the city manager to hire that. Okay. Okay, and to answer your question, Rich, if you don't want me, I will be here.
So that. I was just talking from an insurance liability, not whether or not he wanted you.
Hey, that did, that did spark something that I was going to ask tonight, insurance. With the whole sewage thing, we talked about reviewing our insurance coverages, et cetera. Is that something that's going to be a cost to the city to go over our, our, our total coverage, adding coverage to, for a future if something like this happens again for sewage? Is that something we need to address now or?
So we are in the process of getting a, is the right word, not a survey of what our, an assessment of what our sewer lines are so that we can take those to TML and get a quote to get things covered that were not covered previously and/or increase the coverage that we have. So I will say we officially got approval today. They added a cybersecurity policy last year that did not get added to ours. But it is now added, so we have additional cyber coverage, which based on the number of malware attempts at getting into government systems, we felt was something that needed to be added as well.
And in answer to the sewer line question, Taylor Duncan met with Dubb, our engineer, and the two wastewater from Freeman Milliken that we have engaged with. And they gave the go-ahead on the second line. So there will be at least a second eight-inch line, possibly 10 or 12 inch, depending on how many of the other developers want to help pay for the up cost. So we will have two city sewer lines shortly.
And I think there was a conversation I had with Don, and I don't know if I actually, but I know I'm asking for us to kind of look at some of these insurance policies so we don't have these gaps like that happen again where we're totally on the hook. So once the August 12th meeting happens, there'll be some assignments coming out to everybody on the dais of some things that we'll all kind of have a role in in making sure that we're on overseeing some committees and making things happen. Real quick, just so I cover Eddie on the fire department stuff that we had discussed, I just want to make sure 100% that we talked about up to amounts on the trailer, the body cams, the admin assistant. It was, is everything clear on that, that we're good?
I've got everything in there based on the conversations that we had.
We had on the previous meeting.
That's in here.
Okay.
Yep.
So real quick, kind of coming off of your comment. We kind of bounced around conversations. There were multiple conversations going on at the same time. So trailer's in there, body cams are in there, I heard that. Admin assistant is in, Cola is in, and steps? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Just to give an update, spoke with Bev and the mayor on squad, give an update on that.
Please give that update. That'd be good news for everybody.
So at the last budget meeting or budget workshop, we had discussed kind of my plans that whenever chief retired, instead of his truck sitting idle, we were going to turn that into squad to replace our current squad one. Has an electrical issue in the head unit for the emergency lights. And we discussed potentially selling that. I was anticipating somewhere between 30 and 40,000 dollars. It probably takes about six months to offload it. And having conversations about what's going on with Mark's position, that full-time spot, the tractor, the trailer, all that stuff. Started thinking about it. I think it would actually be a better idea instead of a selling squad because it's a duly, it's four-wheel drive, it's a one-ton vehicle and it's got the service bed on it. Instead of getting rid of that, let's move it over to Public Works. Let them use it as a haul truck for the tractor. Because if you think about it, you've got Mark, he's got his truck. If you're bringing on his part-time employee to be a full-timer, anytime that they need to go mow, they need to do anything like that, they're going to have to load up Mark's truck. Mark's going to take his employee, drop him off to mow and then have to come back and pick him up later, right? I was thinking that probably the next year, we would wind up buying a vehicle to eliminate that. So Mark can still do his code compliance stuff. I think this is a good solution. Minimal repairs to the existing squad one. It does need body mounts for the cab to the chassis. That'll probably be a couple hundred dollars. And if we pulled the emergency light control head out and put it on a switch like Mark's truck is currently, because Mark didn't need the sirens and all the bells and whistles, I believe it will eliminate that problem. Keep in mind, probably next year, we're going to have to put tires on it. And we are going to have to put a little bit of money into changing out the lights because they're red and blues and Mark has to run amber and white, amber and blue. So we will have to change out, yeah. So it's my suggestion.
Did we ever get a?
Chief's current truck becomes a squad truck.
Correct.
Did, did we ever get an estimate though of, of what we would profit doing our own public works for next year? Or do we, yeah, yeah, if we took it on ourself. After, yeah, obviously, let's just take away the initial cost, but, but in other words, how much should we, do we pay out on that? It was like, was it 18?
Are you talking about like force mowing and stuff?
Yeah, just what we're paying out on public works now that we would bring in.
And the way it would work, most likely, potentially, with staffing, we actually wouldn't be taking on necessarily the full amount of a new full-time employee because of the way things could potentially shake out.
So with my comment on possibly repurposing squad one to be public works on page 10. For capital, you've got vehicles. You have 40 grand there. I just want to make sure that that's not the, I, I couldn't imagine you putting that in, not knowing what we were going to sell.
That's tractor and trailer. High estimates on tractor and trailer because we've been kind of going back and forth on what all the tra, the tractor would need. So I kind of went a little over the top on what we had talked about there.
I just wanted to make sure if we go this route and repurpose squad one, the existing squad one to public works, I wanted to make sure that wasn't figured in as some sort of revenue by selling it.
No, I did not have any sort of revenue like that in here.
And this, this 40,000 also includes like a lawn-type mower for them to, because we, we were going to talk doing away with the contract here and let our own staff mow here in the fire station and the 548 station.
The mower, I actually have under the public works, which is going to be page, so a $10,000 line item in for public works for equipment. So that would be page seven, kind of near the top. So that would be the lawn mower, a smaller lawn mower, not necessarily what they would use to mow a field, but what would be used to mow city hall, smaller lots that are forced mows, plus weed eater.
Weed eater blower?
Chainsaw, whatever other types of equipment that would be needed in that role.
One of the things that I asked Chief Dow to look into for me with Chief Simmons' truck becoming squad one now, is that correct? Okay, is we don't, I don't want to keep that as a white vehicle. That needs to be red to match all the rest of the vehicles we have. Since it's going to now be going to majority of the calls, it just needs to be seen and stand out. I mean, people don't get out of the way of red and blue lights as it is, so might as well be bright and red and hopefully they move quicker. He's meeting with an individual tomorrow to look at that. I'll ask him if he can while he's here without giving direction, just have him look at the old squad to give like what a public works would look like so I don't have to continue to look like a red engine when that happens also. That way we at least just kind of know.
So you don't want neon green?
I mean, whatever it can be, but neon green is not really.
Some cities have the.
No.
Thank you.
Hey, we can make sure that the hood, the inlay on the hood is Louis Vuitton patterned.
And a Tiffany, and a Tiffany tailgate?
Wow.
Sounds like it's time to, uh.
Shot fired. It sounds like we're time to move on and possibly adjourn.
Yes.
Is there a new post coming for a chief, an attorney, city manager? What else we got going on tonight?
I believe the old one's still up.
Yeah. Uh, does anybody have anything else? All right, well, let's wrap this up like a Christmas present and at 6:37, we will be adjourned. Alright, well, let's wrap this up like a Christmas present and at six thirty-seven, we will be adjourned.